Rob Moore.
Rob.
We are live on YouTube.
Robert.
Thank you, Kristy. We're going to begin our meeting. Tonight, the March fifteenth, regular meeting is going to be livestreamed electronically. As usual, so welcome to anyone in the public that's watching and their staff and their council. So welcome to everybody. If our meeting is now open, if we can please have a moment of silence. Thanks, everyone. My first motion is moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings that council agreed to move items eight C from information items to action items for discussion. Um, now clause I did.
Yeah.
You did mention to me.
Yes.
That you want to move this item eight C. And I, I eight C is ha- ha- has, you were also talking about the flag, but it eight C has nothing to do with the flag. I just want you to know that if you're, if you're moving eight C, eight C is to uh, it is to support it. That was asking for the federal government to provide greater support to Ukraine. So that, that's what that is. So that's what you're asking for, right?
That's correct. The other issue I'll bring up at another meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to make sure, just wanted to be clear. Okay. That's carried. Thank you. Now also remind the council, if you do have any disclosure of interest, you may declare it now or anytime during the meeting. Next motion move by Karen Jennings, second begins, but well, sorry, I'll have to put, uh, so seconded by. I had Ian's name, so I have to put a different name in. Jeff Carroll. Thank you, Jeff, that the regular meaning of council agenda dated March the fifteenth, twenty twenty two be approved as amended. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. I have a motion moved by, this also was moved by Ian, so I need a mover for this next motion, please. Moved by Karen. Second by Claus Van de Meer, that the minutes of the special meeting of council, February the twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, regular meeting of council, March first, twenty twenty two, and the special meeting of council, March fourth, twenty twenty two be approved as circulated. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Now, do we have any business arising from any of those? Jeff, please. Maybe you can state which minute is first. Thanks.
Well, they're, they're all really the same when you think about it. So I was thinking, would this be an appropriate time just to maybe let the public know what was the outcome of those, of those meetings as now it's now made public? Is this a good, a good time to kind of maybe state that? I mean, we, we put in a press release for it and just to, just to show that, you know, the obviously the openness of, of what those meetings were and the outcome from them.
I don't see a problem. The public's already been given the press release, though.
Okay.
But there's not a problem.
Just like if anybody in the public is curious, those are always good for the, the hiring of the, of the new clerk administrator. Uh, and that's why we had those closed door interview meetings and, and we were happy to to hire somebody out of that, which the press release already done, uh, we hired Alison on, so. I think that's just good to open this. So thanks, Reeve.
Yep, okay. Any other business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, then we're moving on tonight. Uh, we do have a delegation and our delegator is Rob Moore. And he's representing the Rural F A S D Support Network. And so let's see, there's Rob. Welcome, Rob.
Thank you very much for having me, Reeve.
So um, I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to you to do the delegation. We have ten minutes max. And so I'll kind of remind you if we get close to that then. So welcome, Rob.
Thank you. I, I believe I should be able to screen share here if I'm correct.
Yes.
Perfect. Just give me a second here. Okay, so once again, welcome. Thank you, folks, for inviting us back here once again this year. It's always good to see all of you. Uh, Reeve and Jeff and missing Ian, of course, and Karen and Claus. We just also appreciate the opportunity to just share with the residents of Montague Township watching on the live stream. Just what we've been up to this past year and give you a quick update. So the, the first one that I would mention is just off of our slide. Uh, the really big accomplishment that we were able to do this year is our website is up and running now and it's completely live. If you get an opportunity to go and check it out, would strongly encourage you to do so. And it's right there on our opening slide of www.rulefasd.ca and it'll give you an update in terms of all the different programs and events and everything that we've been up to over the past couple of years. Just in terms of background, uh, we are still at this point a nonprofit corporation. We have began the process to get our charity status, however. Uh, but as anything with the CRA, that is not a quick process. So that's, uh, it's hard to say exactly when that will be done. Uh, we, our organization does continue to consist solely of people with lived experience dealing with fetal alcohol disorder. Uh, this past year, we have experienced a significant growth. Once again, we have gone from a hundred and twenty-one families to a hundred and fifty-six families now in the past twelve months, including we're now up to three families from Montague Township, including my own. Uh, things remain the same from a social service standpoint, from a governmental support standpoint. The current MCCSS criteria still does not recognize F A S D as a eligible disability under passport funding as well as S S A H. And so we continue to advocate at the provincial level to see that change. It should be noted as well that research has demonstrated that four percent of our population at this point are living with this disability compared to the one point five percent living with autism and the zero point six percent living with intellectual disabilities, which are the current eligible criteria. Research has also demonstrated that ninety percent of children with F A S D are going to have mental health challenges. And we within our group have certainly seen that uh, in combination with COVID, uh, the it's been a tough year. That's all I'm going to say there. And uh, we also know from research that seventy-five percent of their caregivers are going to have a mental health breakdown at some point in their lifetime. This is why we have really prioritized within our organization that mental health and wellbeing support. And so through our Bell Let's Talk grant, we have been able to pay out almost sixteen thousand dollars in this past year uh, to help with private counseling for youth with F A S D as well as caregivers getting certified as mental health first aiders. What a mental health first aider is, is it's basically a support individual who can initially recognize when someone's mental health is starting to deteriorate. They are not, they do not provide the counseling aspect. That's why it's considered a first aider. It's the initial recognition that mental health is starting to break down. And so we were able to pay for almost thirty-five caregivers to receive that training and we've certainly seen the benefit of that over this past year in doing so. We've also been able to provide system navigation as well as peer facilitated for support for uh, caregivers as well as peer mentoring for children and youth with F A S D. And I think that's probably what I'm most proud of. And I'm going to speak to that a little bit later when we get to our financials. But we are very much um, we're, the peer facilitated one-on-one support is we have, uh, we've been able to hire eight youth from Lanark County. Who basically work one-on-one with a youth with F A S D. And kind of work with them in terms of life skills, work with them from a friendship and social engagement standpoint and so on. Very similar to the things that you've seen Big Brothers do in the past, but uh, the, the eight individuals that we've been able to hire, they all received specific training on characteristics associated with F A S D and best practice strategies on how to support those individuals. In terms of our governance, that's been the other aspect that has really changed and what we focused on this past year. We're thrilled to be able to announce at this point that we have entered into a formal memorandum of understanding with open doors for Lanark Children and Youth. And they are serving as our organizational mentor uh, for our Board of Directors. And we're currently going through some, uh, some changes related to that. Uh, we just had our AGM this, uh, this past month and we are pleased to announce that once again, we have all ten director positions filled, including one who is actually living with F A S D to give that first person perspective on all the decision making that we're doing at an organizational level. The third aspect that we've done is uh, through, through a, a grant from the Ontario Brain Institute, we were able to hire a program evaluator who basically went through our entire organization and laid out the blueprint as to exactly who we are and what we do. Uh, that document is coming out shortly, but what we have done is we've identified the four main pillars of uh, service that we're providing. And the four main pillars, number one is, is education awareness. Second is fellowship, and I'm going to speak to that a little bit later. Third is support, and then the last one is the skill building aspect. What is really fascinating, though, from that, from that um, uh, program evaluation is we have been told that from, from a grassroots organization, which we are, for us to be able to go from a seed to now a scale status in four years is shocking. It's not something that you see very often. And so we through that have been able to identify what is it that we're doing from a rural accessibility standpoint? What is it that we're doing that's creating so much engagement? What is it that we're doing that's creating so much growth? And it's, and we've identified it really is those four pillars, and in particular, it's the fellowship piece. The last aspect is in terms of governance, our AGM is every February. Our minutes, financials, everything are completely open to the public and can be located once again on our website and we invite anyone to go and take a look at that. The last one that I wanted to mention is we are also conducting the first environmental scan of F A S D informed services in Ontario, and we are still on schedule for that gap analysis report to be posted in May, in just a couple of months. Uh, we are in fact, uh, the, the individual that is producing the report and I, uh, we pretty much have the rough draft done. Now we're kind of just starting to put the final touches in terms of the final draft and so on together. This is going to be humongous because we've already been told um, that as long as Minister Clark is reelected come the June election, uh, he will absolutely be bringing this report forward to uh, Queens Park with our support. The other thing that it does, though, that I, I think that we're so excited about is through this report, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there are twelve sectors that all of us deal with within our lives, that they, everything in terms of our engagement, everything that we, that we need within a, a community standpoint, there are, it can all be put into twelve sectors. And through this report, we've been able to interview over eighty-five different organizations within the counties of Lanark and Leeds-Grenville. We have all of their contact information. We have all a dis- a description of all the different services that they do. And it's all going to be put into that one document and then shared back out to all of those different organizations. And we see this as being so key because there's so many times when organizations are working in isolation and in silos and they don't know if they're having to deal with a different sector. For example, what does the hospital know about recreation opportunities in a municipality? Likely don't. And so this report is going to be able to connect all those different organizations and all those different sectors together so that everyone has that common information. And we really see this as a really great community building opportunity going forward. Finally, sorry.
Excuse me, Rob. Uh, the attendance is up, so if you'd like to summarize what's left and then we'll go to questions, please.
Sure. Yeah. So the last piece then is, uh, I just wanted to let you know, we are uh, hoping to hear from the Trillium Foundation in the next couple of months, whether our grant application is going to be successful. And then in terms of our request for the, uh, the council tonight, what we're looking for is we would very much like to be able to have Montague Township publicly once again. And stand in solidarity and with our organization as well. Uh, what we're looking at is we would love to be able to once again put your, uh, your logo up on our, on our website uh, as one of our community partners. Right now, we currently have the Civitan Walmart Cheerful Giver in the town of Prescott. We also just found out the municipality of North Grenville is also joining us. And so we're looking for us to be able to continue that programming of connecting our youth with our, our youth peer mentors is really what that fifteen hundred dollars would be going toward. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, uh, Rob. Um, I'm going now, if you can go back to the screen there, Kristy, please. So I can see everyone. Thanks. Thank you, Rob, then. I'm going to open it up to any questions. We do, we do have a resolution, but I'll bring it forward in a minute. So first Jeff and then Claus.
I, I, just a couple of quick ones. Uh, have you presented anything to the county? Just because the county is a social services side of a lot of the world too as well. And I'm, I'm just curious of the, uh, what, what you've also approached the county on to as well.
Yes, we, we did approach the county of Lanark and unfortunately we were unsuccessful.
Okay.
They didn't really, and they didn't give us much of an explanation as to why, other than it sounded like that they, they definitely had a lot more requests than they had funds available. So they had some pretty hard decisions to make this year.
That's fair. And just, and one quick follow-up to, to as well, Rob. Uh, I mean, kudos on, on building this. This is a need in, in our community for sure. I mean, I work in education too as well. I, I understand the need for it and I, and I think uh, more and more light that is on this is going to definitely help with a lot of that development too as well. And uh, I look forward to this part of our discussion if, if, for, I've understood what like the, you've gotten from, from the county too as well. So, so once again, thank you for this.
Claus.
Uh, okay. Thanks, Reeve. Uh, thanks, Rob, for the presentation. Very informative on that. My question is the fifteen hundred dollars. Is that a one-time or is that a yearly fee or donation? I call it for lack of a better word, that you're looking for.
I mean, obviously we do, uh, we have to do a new application every year and, and the council has to make that decision on an, on an annual basis. Uh, I certainly know at this point that um, we recognize that the core of our, our organization, we've been able to identify from our financials that uh, we have to be able to raise about ten to twelve thousand dollars every year to, to exist. Uh, just from a, um, a bookkeeping standpoint, from a facility standpoint, from an insurance standpoint and so on. And so we're always in a position where we're going to be looking for around that ten to twelve thousand dollars every year. Uh, I will say that this past year, we have been extremely successful in that we raised um, almost twenty-five thousand dollars in terms of both grants and donations. The local community in terms of donations has been extremely generous toward our organization for sure. Yeah.
Follow-up, Claus? I have follow-up, Reeve. Have you approached any corporations? In regards to this program?
We have. Uh, the biggest challenge that we're running into right now from the corporation standpoint is they very much like to get their tax receipts back. And so uh, when they make those kinds of donations, so you have to really have charity status to uh, to be able to really have um, conversations where they become very interested in, in supporting your organization.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Rob, uh, one question I have, it's a bit unrelated to the request, but uh, I'm just wondering, um, as a stakeholder, are you, uh, do you sit at the situation table?
So we right now, um, the challenge that we have is again, because of where our current financial status is, we do not have a formal employee. So because we don't have a formal employee, we don't really have someone who's available during work hours, Monday to Friday, nine to five. Uh, we definitely have a standing offer to have a representative at the situation table. Uh, that is why, that is what the Trillium Grant is about. Uh, the Trillium Grant, if it comes through in the next couple of months, is going to enable us to hire one full-time employee, one part-time employee, and actually have a physical office. And if, if, if we can accomplish that, uh, I can say with a high amount of assurance that we would likely have a seat at the situation table following that.
Thank you. I would highly recommend and highly encourage you to do that.
And it is, it is partly why we entered into the memo of understanding with open doors was to make sure that our voice is being heard at the situation table and they're serving in that function for us right now.
Yeah, thank you then. Okay, so seeing no further questions, Rob, I want to thank you for this delegation. And I do have a motion here. It was moved by Claus Van de Meer and seconded by Jeff Carroll that council received the delegation from Rural F A S D Support Network for Information. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, thanks then, Rob. We're going to go on with the rest of our meeting. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yep. So moving on, uh, the, um, we're going to go on to the reports. There's no report of municipal officers, but there is one report of the committees. And I do have a motion. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings that the council approved the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of March the first, twenty twenty-two, and the special meeting of committee, the whole of March the eighth, twenty twenty-two, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, is there any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, uh, we're moving on. We have some bylaws. The first one was moved by Karen Jennings and I need a seconder for this one. Seconded by Claus. The bylaw thirty-eight, twenty ninety-two, twenty twenty-two being a bylaw to provide the, for the collection of household garbage and recycling materials in the township of Montague. Be read for a second and third time and passed, signed and sealed this fifteenth day of March, twenty twenty-two. All in favor? Carried. With you. I need a mover for the next motion, please. Moved by Jeff. And seconded by Claus Van de Meer, that bylaw thirty-eight, ninety-three, twenty twenty-two being a bylaw to establish development charges for the township of Montague. Be read for a second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this fifteenth day of March, twenty twenty-two. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. And moved by Claus Van de Meer, seconded by Jeff Carroll, that bylaw thirty-eight, ninety-four, twenty twenty-two being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an addendum to the existing development agreement with Danielle Eugene Batagio and Natalie Lorette Batagio, the owners of property described municipally as twenty-six King Street. Be read for a second and third time and passed, signed and sealed this fifteenth day of March, twenty twenty-two. All in favor? Uh, did you have a question first, Jeff?
I, I'm assuming the reason why this is on, uh, forges here too, as well as you might be part of this, correct me if I'm wrong, but is there any more calls notes about this that, that we need to be made aware of or, or anyways, yeah.
Yes, Jeff. Uh, thanks, Jeff. I'll go to Barb, please.
Thank you very much, Reeve. Uh, counselor, yes. So um, this is purely an administrative issue. The original site plan agreement was entered into last September. Um, and through the, the review by the CBO, it was identified there were some elements of the site plan that did not comply with the zoning bylaw, specifically the width of the culvert and the size of the parking spaces. Um, and those got corrected and changed. And this is to it bring this new site plan into the agreement as an addendum, replacing the old one that had errors in it.
So there's no, there's no uh, changing of the, of the lot lands or nothing like that. It's just really just fixing them and keeping everything within the official plan, keeping with everything under like the, uh, the regular rules and everything else, right?
You're absolutely correct, sir.
Thank you very much. That's perfect.
Hey, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Reeve, if there is no other matters associated with my attendance tonight, uh, I'll have my leave and say goodnight to you all, if that's all right.
Yep. Thanks, Barb's.
Thank you again. Good night.
Good night. So we're moving on. Uh, we have no motions and notice of motion. And under the correspondence, uh, the, there's one action item that's been moved forward and that's the uh, M R C C Easter event letter. So that's uh, on the agenda. So who's going to bring that forward? I do have a motion here. Um, Jeff?
Yeah. What do, what do we need, what do we need to do for that, uh, Reeve?
Um, it's just that if someone wants to discuss it.
Oh, okay. Sorry. No, I, I mean, I think this is great. This is, uh, things are lining up nicely and I think, uh, it's well, well within the budgets and this is uh, coming, coming, could be a, a good, a good event, so.
So is, is everything in this letter in the budget?
It's underneath the five thousand, uh, which is pending in the budget right now for, for their, anything for the rec and uh, and culture committees. Uh, events they want to do. So I mean, with, they haven't, I think this is great.
So the, the biggest expense there obviously is the petting zoo.
It is, yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, then we have a motion here. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings that the council received the Montague Recreation Culture Committee Easter event letter and the following be directed. So there's nothing on this resolution. It just says, and the following be directed.
Kristy?
Yes, Kristy?
Um, should, so should the um, should the, should it come back to the township? I guess like, should each, the invoices come back to the township and be, be, be paid directly from the township instead of like, I guess, I think maybe would the red community be looking for how is this going to get paid in the sense of um, should the, the petting zoo invoice the township directly and then the township pays? They've, they've found out the price and everything. I think is that, that was kind of my understanding of the letter, but I, I could be wrong.
Uh, Karen?
Um, the, I think the invoices could come through the township unless the petting zoo, for example, wants to pay them upfront. And which maybe they've had to pay by visa or, you know, whatever. So. and which maybe they've had to pay by visa or, you know, whatever. So as long as there is definitely an invoice of some sort for all of the expenses coming forward, it's just however these vendors wish to, like, I think craft supplies at thirty dollars, treats and candies, decorations and incidentals will all be just by reimbursing members. Definitely the pony rides and the petting zoo, they may be able to invoice, but I know sometimes some businesses prefer to be paid upfront. So I guess it'd just be however that can work out.
Yes, Christie?
So could we say that council received the the Easter letter and that the following be directed that the members of the Montague Rec Committee proceed with purchasing and then providing receipts back to the township? I think just to have that clarification for them. To go ahead and, like, to go ahead and purchase the things and then bring in the receipts.
That that sounds fine to me as far as that goes and and, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to repeat that, Christie, so that everybody knows exactly what they're voting on then? So because it says that council received the Montague Recreation Culture Committee Easter event letter and that the following be directed?
Right, so that the committee members proceed with the purchase purchase of supplies and provide receipts to the treasurer for reimbursement.
I guess in word says supplies, you could say maybe supplies and service maybe because
Yeah.
The the petting zoo would be more like a service, I guess, than a supply.
Okay, supplies and services and provide the receipts to the treasurer for reimbursement. I think
Yeah.
If that sounds okay?
Think so? That's okay with you there, Andrew? Okay, thanks.
No worries.
Okay, so all in favor of this? That's carried. So you'll have, this one you'll have to redo. Christie, if you don't mind, I can sign it later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're moving on. The, there was one item moved forward, and that is item C, and that is yours, Claus.
Okay, thank you, Reeve. Just reading through this motion that the township of the township Mono? Mono, whatever.
Mono.
Mono, put forward. I think we should support this township. I think everyone realizes that more letters of support we send to the situation with Ukraine and Russia, the better it is urging the government to send as much aid as they possibly can. Now, I did hear on the news tonight that they've really upped their dollar value of aid and so forth, but I think what this township is looking for, not only financial aid, but as much other aid that they can provide such as having shelter for these people that are homeless. There's three million of them now that are that are homeless and trying to get out of the country and so forth, so that they'll be coming here. So I think the federal government has to step up and help them when they arrive here. So I think we should support this mono mono letter that they sent to the federal government.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yes, I wish to make that motion, Reeve. Thank you.
Exactly. By Karen? All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
You so, thank you then, Claus and Christie. That'll be another one then that I'll get later, okay? Thanks. So moving on, then we have under unfinished business, the breakfast with the Easter bunny, which is on Saturday, April the ninth.
That's coming up soon.
And who is speaking to that? Christie?
I just, I believe Andrew and I, we're just looking for direction. You, as council's doing the, is doing the breakfast, I just, we hadn't discussed a fee for the breakfast. I know when you did the breakfast with Santa back in twenty nineteen, it was a five dollar fee for an adult, I think two dollars for a child. So I'm just I'm just looking, we're, I guess we're just looking for consensus so that we can make the advertisement correct. Just either way you want to go.
Hey, Karen, please?
So is this councils doing the breakfast, not the rec committee? I thought we were just working with them.
I was under the understanding that council was doing the breakfast.
Okay.
Claus?
Yeah, thank you, Reeve. I'm understanding also that we're doing the breakfast. I think the rec committee is going to provide the entertainment for some things for the kids to do and that. Just want to speak to the fee of five dollars and two dollars for kids. I think when we did the breakfast, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we had a large family come in, that we felt maybe we were just kind of charging minimal, that we didn't really charge the whole gang. And you get a family of five coming in. In this day and age, it could be a little expensive for them. We didn't waive the fees, but we just said, well, you know, just give us ten bucks, that's good enough or something. It's rushing or anything should be there.
Yeah, if if it's two dollars, if it's two dollars a child, that would be ten dollars if it's five kids. Jeff, and then back to you, Karen.
Go go ahead, Karen. I I think my question was kind of already answered with that, so.
Okay.
So you know, when I sat at the door to do the breakfast, I didn't have any requests, so we did well. But I mean, I can certainly take that into account again if I'm asked to sit at the door and collect the money like last time.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I think we stay with the same as what we charged, five for adults and two for kids, that would be fine.
Yeah. I think everybody's fine with that.
So we'll just, I'll just put it in the minutes as council provided consensus for the fees for the Easter breakfast.
Yep. Now, did you need anything else?
Just if you guys want to officially provide consensus by going around, maybe.
Well, I, I think everybody said it already, so.
Okay.
Jeff, and then back to you, Karen.
Just gonna say, I guess the next part is we got to get the food for all that stuff, so, I mean, not to put Claus on the spot, but I know that
I knew you were gonna do that, Jeff.
You've done it to me a few times, so just payback, no, I'm kidding.
But while we had, we've always, sorry. But we've always had a good relationship with the garden market, so you're in no trouble once I make up a list and you get it ordered from the garden market. The nice thing there, if we order ten dozen eggs, we can bring back two dozen. They're not used.
Sounds good.
Just maybe if a float could be provided so that there's change available, so that everybody that shows up with twenties first thing in the morning, that there's change to give back.
Yes, Claus?
Just on the food then, who's providing the maple syrup? Jeffrey Carroll. Yeah, I thought someone by the name of Carol provided it the last time.
He may, he may not have the same amount than you last time.
Otherwise, otherwise we'll get it through the garden market, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Well, that's everything. Thank you.
Okay, thanks then. We don't have a motion for that, I don't think. So before we confirm the proceedings here, Christie, do you have any questions from the public?
Let me double check.
Yes, Karen?
Has there been a time decided for that breakfast? I believe it's nine till eleven or nine till noon. I'll double, I I will double check with the minutes. And I don't have any questions here on my end.
Okay. So about the timing, my, it's only my suggestion, I I think to condense it would be better from nine to eleven rather than stretching it out to twelve, because then you know, what gets cooked might get a little stale, and I I think two hours is is quite adequate if that's fine with everybody. Okay, don't see any opposition to that. So Christie, then if you can just take that into consideration, Jeff?
I just pop it in my head, what, like, because obviously with the pettings and everything else, what was the the rec? What did they have? I guess we got to check with Jessica maybe too as well, what the timing is and when that's going to be there too as well, right? Sorry, Christie, you might know that, right?
I I don't know right off the top of my head, but I do know when you did breakfast with Santa, you only did breakfast from nine to eleven, and then you had visits with Santa from eleven to one. So that makes sense that if you want to do breakfast from nine to eleven and then have it go till one, but just have only breakfast being served until eleven.
Perfect.
Well, let's get the word out as much as possible because it's a considerable expense, and let's make it a success, everyone.
I I haven't started, so we're good.
Good. We want to see lots and lots of kids. Okay, so we are moving on, moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by, I need a second for this one, seconded by Jeff. Thanks, Jeff. That bylaw thirty-eight ninety-five twenty twenty-two being a bylaw to confirm the proceeding to council at its regular meeting held on March the fifteenth twenty twenty-two, be read for a second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this fifteenth day of March twenty twenty-two. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. And I need another mover for this one, moved by Karen. Thanks, Karen, seconded by Claus Vandemir, that this meeting do now adjourn at six forty-one PM until March the fifteenth twenty twenty-two at six PM or until the call agreed subject to need. All in favor? Thank you.
Had a date error.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That had a date error, because I think it said until March fifteenth, which is tonight.
Oh, sorry about that.
It should be April fifth.
Thank you, Karen. I just read what, I didn't realize it. Thank you for that. Okay, so that's the end of the meeting. Do we need, do we need any time? Can we just go straight into the next meeting?
Or you can keep going.
Is that okay, Christie? Do you need any time to move on? Okay, so we're not going to, we're not, we're just going to go straight into the next meeting then, okay? One sec, please. Again, welcome to everybody. This is our committee of the whole. It's being live streamed also March fifteenth twenty twenty-two. This meeting is now open. I will also remind all of council again that if you do have a disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. We're going straight into our report. The first one is, I suspect it's, yes, it is. It's Steve. And that's going to be on the Code Drive gravel to surface treatment. So welcome, Steve. I know you're there. I just don't see you yet. There you are. Thank you. So I'm going to pass this part of the meeting over to you. One sec, please, Christie.
Did you, did I miss the passing of, or the the committee of the whole agenda be approved? Did I miss it?
Yes, you did, I guess. Yeah, this was moved by, sorry. This, I need a mover for this one. Moved by Karen. And seconded by Claus Vandemir, that the committee of the whole agenda dated March fifteenth twenty twenty-two be approved. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thank you there, Christie. I just, I didn't see it on the agenda part of it, so I missed it. Okay, so over to you then, Steve, on the Code Drive.
Thanks, Reeve. So this report brought forward to committee, just kind of detailing about Code Drive, which was in the second draft of the budget and got passed. The report initially brought in December was staff basically from the desktop, as is snow on the ground. We weren't able to get any measurements or anything in the field. So it's more or less a report for council's information on the procedure of going forward with this project. It will linger into the summer by the time we get this tendered with all the data we need to obtain in the field. And it is a substantial project as it is quite a large volume of work that's going to go into this. So it's just letting council know that, you know, moving into the summer, we're going to have higher unit prices from contractors. There's risks that we're going to have quite high cost on this if we proceed there. The one would be to have it completed in twenty twenty-three. Staff was originally before budget discussion is going to bring this forward as a twenty twenty-three budget item. Anyways. And it's just kind of detailing kind of what staff has to do moving forward to get this completed. That being said, it does affect the other section of Code Drive. If we complete that this year, we probably will have a unit price savings on the single surface treatment. But if we do push that all into twenty twenty-three, there would be no, the road wouldn't be falling apart with an extra year delay. The other thing I noted in this is that we should the township currently does not have a gravel road upgrade policy. Staff has had many questions on why certain roads are subject to upgrading. So just be a benefit for council and staff to reference an actual policy on why roads, certain roads are being recommended for upgrading. And just a couple of details in the report about how some municipalities handle that.
Thank you there, Steve. Any questions? I have, yes, Jeff?
I I just a couple of comments. Thanks, Steve, for this this report. I think that was, obviously during the budget times, it was like my concerns of of us doing the road and having enough time to get it through. So I'm glad that we're finding a way that we're still keeping on the docket and moving it next year and and seeing how we can make it all combining with the one road. I think that's a, that's a, that's a good idea for for cost savings, so so and and hopefully doing the right thing for that road. And I do commend you for the, for the idea of 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 making sure that we're kind of getting the roads lined up to, and that might answer some more questions. I think they're there for our residents and also help us as we go forward with what we want to do, so. I think this is great. I think this is the right move. It's, you know, and also make sure that people on Code Drive know that we're, we're not trying to delay it. It's it's to make sure that we do the right cost and and it's and it's going to make their road better into next year. So I think, thanks, Steve, for this.
Claus, did you have your hand up also?
Yes, thanks, Reeve. I just want to echo Counselor Carroll's comments. Don't want to repeat them, but I just do have a question, Steve. You said about a list of or something, say what roads are, is that not in our roads need study?
So the roads need study, it it only discusses projects that are currently sold capital projects such as upgrade, rehabs and reconstruction. There is no gravel roads recommended in the roads need study for upgrade in there.
Okay, I would agree with your suggestion. Maybe we should do that in the future. But anyway, excellent report. Thanks for all the work.
Okay, then we're moving on. This was, motion was moved by Claus Vandemir, seconded by Jeff Carroll, that the committee of the whole received the following report. The Code Drive gravel to surface treatment report and that the following be recommended to council. That council direct staff to develop a road upgrade policy and be brought to a future council meeting for approval. And that Code Drive upgrade funding remain as a line in the twenty twenty-two budget with an expected start date of twenty twenty-three for this project. All in favor? Thank you. The next one is yours, Andrew, on the compliance audit committee terms of reference.
Thank you. So this report, it was written originally dated February first, and it's wasn't on the agenda at that time at that meeting, so now I would put it on the agenda this evening. And what it does is it's regarding the compliance audit committee terms of reference. It's for the joint compliance audit committee for the election of twenty twenty-two. And the recommendation is that council adopt the attached terms of reference. And then that's option one. And the compliance audit committee is a requirement of the Municipal Elections Act, and by establishing a joint committee, there are savings realized through joint advertising recruitment. And this terms of reference is essentially being brought forward like it was in twenty eighteen and a function for that previous elections, and it provides that compliance audit committee for the period after the election till the next election in four years. So by passing this, it's a requirement of the upcoming election.
Thank you, Andrew. I do have a motion. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings. That the committee of the whole received the following report, that being the compliance audit That being the co- compliance audit committee terms of reference. And that the following be recommended to council, that council adopt the attached terms of reference, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. And now the next one uh is um, I guess this one is also yours, Andrew, and that's on the Galloport Center Development. Finance, financial impact study.
Thank you. So for this report, uh. It's recommended that council proceed with option one to participate in sharing the cost of a financial impact study with the town of Smiths Falls. And. In that option, it recommends or is requested by the town of Smiths Falls that um there's a town township split. Of sixty seven to thirty three percent in the sharing of that cost. So. Uh what's taking place uh recently. Is uh the town asked us to have a meeting and discuss this and present this to us. Uh we had a meeting with the C A O and the mayor of the town and myself and Council Carol and Council Jennings. So um. The attachments from the request from the town are with this report. And. What they're looking at is the effects of like greater development of the Galloport Center property. And the implications of the assets, uh investment of the town, uh taking on new streets and infrastructure in the future. And projected tax revenues from that, and the possibility of discussing the the ratio. Of the sharing in that tax revenue with the town and township uh moving forward. Uh from the Galloport Center agreement, so.
Um Andrew, uh I just want a a question there. You mentioned that the meeting has had happened. Um we we haven't received a report yet from that meeting, have we?
Uh that's what this report is.
But this is it then, that's the only, okay?
Yeah, this is, this was the outcome of that meeting.
Okay. All right. Open up to council then? Uh yes, Claus?
Uh thanks Reeve, uh thanks for the report, Andrew. Uh interesting, I've seen the uh. Rough draft sketches, the what they're proposing to do there, it's pretty elaborate. I guess my question is, this is something that we're looking at way, way down the road. I mean, right now, the town is developing. Right where I'm. Living right behind me here, massive amount of houses and so forth. These developers actually think they're gonna be able to develop. Something else there and and have them saleable in time. And I was always under- understanding that if a developer was working on a project. If a study needed to be done, that was a developer's responsibility to do the study. It's his development, it's not ours, it's not the town's. It's the developer's development. Uh yes, it's in town property and we have a cost sharing thing there for taxes and so forth, so great. But I would suggest that the developer should pay for this study.
It is, anyone else? Uh Jeff?
I think we should move to defer this item, uh as this is, I'm talking about the Galloport Center. And we had another agreement that uh we stated needs to be discussed before we go forward, so we can defer this to a future meeting. Uh I believe is the more appropriate action that we should be doing with this. I hope the consensus there, I think Council Jennings, we can chime in on that too as well, and and that's and that's also remember the agreement that we had from before, and that's what kind of what we come out of that meeting to as well.
Hey, did I see your hand, Karen?
Yeah, I was gonna say that um I'm actually in agreement with Claus in that the costing should be coming from a developer. It's them that are looking to do the building. Um. And and it's been commissioned through the developer and the town. Um so if they want to proceed with it now, then that's at their expense. Because it's certainly not something that we will be funding immediately.
Okay, thank you then. And so Jeff, you've um, you've put on the table to uh defer this. So uh Christie, I just question then for you. Uh regarding this um. I guess if we're gonna defer it, then this this motion that we have in front of us, it becomes null and void, right? Okay, so Jeff, I'll go to you and then I'm gonna get consensus to defer this, so Jeff, please.
Yeah, and real- real quick about that is I I don't disagree with uh with Council Jennings, it would be uh Reeve Vandemir, I I I totally agree. Uh it's more in the sense of this discussion uh or to even go forward. It. We have another pressing one that's forward, and I don't think we should even be saying yes, no, or anything, it's defer until we get to that. Uh but that's that's why, that's why I think we're at that point, just as as far as deferring it. Um and that's kinda where I stand for that, so.
Uh do you want just consensus there, uh Christie then for this, that we defer this? Or do you need a motion?
Yeah, I I believe you can give consensus to defer it.
Okay, so you've given it, uh Jeff, uh Claus?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
And myself, so you have that? Okay, thanks, then Christie. Thank you then, moving on, um. The last one uh report is yours, Andrew, also on the third draft, the twenty two do uh twenty two, twenty twenty two budget.
Thank you. Uh so last week, uh last Tuesday evening, we had a second draft budget meeting. And uh part of the direction out of that meeting was uh to um. Bring the changes back to this council meeting uh in anticipation of. Uh if council is uh. Uh following the recommendation here that uh they will come back on the April fifth. Uh as this third draft uh to be presented and passed at that meeting by council, so um once again, uh. I've provided the reports there for you to review and uh there was the changes as directed. Which results in uh. Still a two percent increase in the tax rate and the proposed tax rate in that situation would be point zero zero seven. Four, six, one, eight, seven versus our for twenty twenty two, which would be versus our twenty twenty one tax rate, which was point zero zero seven. Three, one, five, five, six. Uh so as an example, uh for each hundred thousand dollars in residential assessment, that would be an increase. Being fourteen dollars and sixty three cents in the taxes for that.
Yeah. Yes, Karen?
Just confirming the difference that we originally had was still staying with the two percent. Um. Where we were putting the money into the building reserve for. Renovations or additions, et cetera. You've said in the administration reserve, is that where you're placing it? Is that, is it under the new municipal or the line that was administration? Like, is it just all combined?
It is, and and it represents an amount that's available for the municipal complex.
Okay, so just I wanted to be clear that it's under the line that said, cuz it says budget expense, new municipal complex.
Open that up here.
When I look at your reserves, just looking to to clarify.
Sure. Yeah, so in the reserves summary.
Yeah.
Look to the line where it says um. New municipal complex, yeah, it's now uh in in putting uh fifty six thousand dollars there, that line. In the reserve schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, see no further questions, Andrew. Thank you for this. I do have a motion though, it was uh I need a mover for this motion, please. Move by Claus. Oh, guess what? It's been moved by Claus and seconded by Claus, can't do that. So I'm gonna go to Karen.
I can't read two people.
Okay, moved by Karen and seconded by uh Claus Vandemir, that the committee of the whole received the following report. That's the third draft of twenty twenty two budget and that the following be recommended to council. That the third draft twenty twenty two budget being presented in this report be brought to council for approval. At the April fifth twenty twenty two council meeting. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And Christie, before we adjourn, do you have any? Uh questions?
Let me just double check.
Or Andrew?
Um I don't see any questions in my uh email inbox here.
I'm just checking our Facebook Messenger.
If I forget to ask you, Andrew, make sure to re- remind me.
Yeah, yeah, if I see any questions, I'll let you know.
Thanks.
I don't have any questions here on my end.
It's, how many people are visiting us tonight?
Uh currently, we are, we have two people. Um there was, at one point during the meeting, there was four people watching tonight.
Okay, thanks then. All right, uh I think that brings us to the end of our meeting and uh the last motion. Was moved by Claus Vandemir and seconded by Jeff Carroll, that the committee of the whole meeting do now adjourn. Uh at seven oh one. All in favor? That's carried. And I do believe that we have actually broken our record.
True.
So was the missing counselor the the holdup?
Can we blame it on him or what?